I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Carangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu. Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gloss.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lacks.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Homewares Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped and later broadcast. Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. We will start off tonight with superintendent's report. Dr. Valesky?
Thank you, President Becker, and good evening, everyone. Mu Alpha Theta's Math Honor Society Induction Ceremony was held on Tuesday, December 7. Mu Alpha Theta is an organization comprised of a talented group of students who have been recognized both nationally and abroad for their combination of scholarship and service. Each of the 51 inductees met the requirements for membership, including distinction in college preparatory mathematics in addition to all other academic subjects, and have demonstrated the ability to work hard and show initiative and reliability. The principal purpose of Mu Alpha Theta is to develop strong scholarship in mathematics and to inspire a deeper enthusiasm for the subject. These members have the opportunity to share their talents as they volunteer their time to provide countless students with additional help in their mathematics courses. On Friday, December 10, we held our second-dose vaccine clinic for students at Hammerhill Middle School from 4:00 p.m. to nearly 10:00 p.m., and if that was a COVID cough.
No, no.
Our partners at Walmart administered over 415 vaccines to students and over 300 boosters to eligible individuals 16 years and older. We are already planning additional school vaccination clinics for the convenience of our community. And East Brunswick Township is already planning for their own community clinic with dates to be announced soon. A few reminders. Thursday, December 23 is the single-session day for students and staff with lunch served for kindergarten through 7th grade. Schools will be closed Friday, December 24 through Friday, December 31, and schools will resume Monday, January 3, hard to believe, the year 2022. I would like to wish everyone a safe, joyous, and peaceful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. Okay. The next most important report is that of our student rep, Nora. Can't wait to hear what's going on as we get into the final winter break. As an EB student for seniors?
I hadn't thought of it like that. As you said, we're getting ready for winter break. Everyone's getting a little stir-crazy, and we're just trying to make it through that end. As Dr. Valesky had mentioned, there were Honor Society inductions in Mu Alpha Theta. These didn't happen last year, for the most part, because of COVID and everyone not being in person. So it was pretty great to see everyone being able to be celebrated. A couple early decision and other acceptances have started to come out. It's great to be able to see colleges like Cornell, Georgetown, Lehigh, NYU, just a host of different schools, and seeing my friends and classmates being accepted to those. We have our Winter Spirit Week next week. Fun days to dress up. We're doing a twin day, a holiday festive wear day, and hopefully we'll get a lot of participation in those. And we had, the last couple weeks, we've been decorating within our homerooms, some door decorating competition going on. And I just wanted to show a couple specific doors. The winters are not announced until tomorrow, but I'm going to pick a couple specific doors to show. This one here, EB8, is from the seniors. It's very well done. I don't want to scroll too quickly, but there are quite a few, so.
Oh, they're great.
Yeah. It was really great to see. We do this competition every year. Or I guess it's not usually a competition, but with the new structure of homerooms, we were able to get even more participation, especially from the students. And there are just so many different ideas. This one's mine.
So what Nora just alluded to was it is a competition, and she just pointed to her winning.
The winning was not my door. I'm trying to find it.
Oh, this is great.
Yeah, they're very unique.
Some very creative ones in there.
These ones are all the juniors that we're looking at now. And this one, L5, right here, Santa on a little beach vacation. That was something that was really interesting to hear about. One of the girls in this homeroom had moved from California. So she was actually celebrating her Californian Christmas a little bit with that one, the beach vacation. And we had participation from all the grades, and especially, including staff and the custodians even joined in, getting down to those doors now. These ones are all sophomores. There's just so many. This one was a competition amongst people. I'm not sure what the prize was, but you had to count the different bunny males that are on the door. So it was just really great overall to see all the interaction.
On the Grinch, was that the Grinch?
Yeah. And then we got a couple staff doors. Student council actually worked with some of the staff on creating their doors. This is the bulletin board that the custodian set up. And then a couple more doors.
Very creative.
Oh, thank you so much for bringing this to us. That was wonderful.
As I was saying, it was just great to see everyone participating. And of course, the cookie prize was probably a little bit of an incentive, but it was great to see everyone working together to create something special. And then finally, I just wanted to say quickly, we've been doing a great job in school. There have not been any transmissions of COVID at the high school. And I feel like everyone is being very respectful and keeping their masks on and taking care of their fellow classmates.
Thank you so much. And again, that was a real treat. Talk about giving us insight into what's going on in the school. You actually took us into the building, and we greatly appreciate it.
Little tour.
Thank you so much. Hope you have a wonderful winter break and a very happy holiday and New Year to you and your family.
Thank you, too.
And now we have another presentation. Building Our Success at East Brunswick High School. Dr. Valesky?
Ma'am, let's go around here. It's my pleasure to do the public presentation about the Building Our Success, which is really a theme that's been, that was really kicked off about seven years ago at my state-of-the-district addresses. And we've been building on this multiple years. And of course, as everyone, we were temporarily plateaued by the pandemic. But after discussions with the board, I think we have come to a decision point with an action item on the agenda tonight for the board. So I will, for the public, like to run through what our, what our plan is. So I'm going to take you back to 1966. Even though the original structure of the high school dates back to 1958, back in 1966, this was viewed as the school of the future. So since 1966 until 2013, you can see substantial changes in the footprint of the building with many additions into the core facility and, of course, connecting all of those spines of the building, which were built on a Californian concept. And I know some members of this board attended school during the transition of the high school and may even have moved from class to class in the outdoors and the elements from time to time. So there's been a substantial change in that footprint. Again, rebuilding, revitalizing the high school over periods of time to meet the needs of the changing educational environment, the needs of our teachers, the needs of our staff, and of course, the needs of our community. And here we are once again on the cusp of looking at additional changes to the high school or what we need in terms of a high school. So Dr. Vanilla has been actively involved in the discussion about what are our operational logistical concerns that currently he and his staff are facing. We have classrooms that vary in size, so not one size fits all. Within those classrooms, we have aging ventilation systems that we have worked very hard to rectify this year, especially during COVID and recovery from COVID. We have corridors in the building that tend to be congested. And now because of the reconfiguration with block scheduling, we have more people in spaces at a certain time. We have done a very good job of providing security infrastructure and security manpower at all of our buildings. But the challenge at the high school is multiple hallways, intersections, blind spots that require stationing physical people at transitions so you can actually watch and monitor the movement within the building. So that is a, that's a consumption of human resource for us right now. Of course, our auditorium. We've all been in the high school auditorium for student performances. And the acknowledgement that many of our students take up the first quarter or third of the auditorium that are participating in the event that night. That we have so many of our students participating in the arts that we physically don't have the floor space for them. We don't have performance space for them. We don't have practice space for them. The acoustics in the auditorium, the lighting in the auditorium are, let's be quite honest, they're subpar. They don't measure up against any of our partner or peer school districts in Middlesex County. And the cafeteria. Cafeteria was expanded at one time, but again, is still inadequate in size, even though our child nutrition department has really gone above and beyond in providing the variety of food. And I credit, you know, Joe Crotchwell with leading that effort to make sure our students have a variety of food options. Nora, you can speak to that as a student. I think that over the time you've been a student in East Brunswick, I think anybody who's been a senior at the high school, they've seen a dramatic change in what's offered at the high school. And all of you have had children in the high school or currently have children in high school. I know you get reports about what options they have for food. But the actual physical space of the cafeteria is inadequate. So that's, that's an issue. Looking at our existing facility, the existing high school, one of the critical questions for the board has been, what is it going to take or what would it take to renovate the space, to bring it up to standards? And what's the impact of that? So this, I'm not going to go through each item individually, but you can see a wide variety and huge range of infrastructure issues that would have to be addressed in order to renovate the high school and bring it up to the standard that this community expects. And of course, the standard this board expects. The major issues that reside would be like, things like water, electrical, plumbing, and of course, the actual footprint where the actual high school resides right now. Modifying that footprint, leaving that high school where it is, really limits the opportunities for expansion of the space and creating other opportunities on that land site. So one of the options that we've looked at is, you know, what does this cost versus the cost of potentially building a new facility? And those are still some detailed questions to be answered. But these, this is clearly a pretty extensive list of issues that would have to be explored. So the board has already approved our reconfiguration of grades. Beginning September of 2022, we are going to reconfigure our eight elementary schools to a K-4 environment. With Hammerhill going to 5, 6 as an upper elementary school. Churchill will be, with the addition of TCU's that are programmed to go in beginning September, will be expanded, one grade, now housing grades 7, 8, and 9. TCU's residing as a temporary structure for the 7th grade. And of course, the high school stays as a 10, 11, 12 configuration. This intermediate phase of putting TCU's or temporary classroom units at Churchill would give the board approximately 20 years' capacity at the elementary schools. That's what we anticipate, that the growth in the elementary schools could be accommodated over that 20-year period. That being said, that is assuming that programming resides as it does now. If there were any changes in programming, any federal changes in the number of students that could reside in an individual class that could change over the next 20 years, that could have an impact on us, especially as lower class sizes would require more classrooms and more staff. So we believe that will give us the size we need in elementary schools. But what this does is it gives the board and the community an option. If we were to pursue a new high school, a comprehensive 9 through 12 high school on the existing high school site, the only other change that would be required to do that would be to remove the temporary classrooms from the Churchill site. We will have renovated the fields. They would stay. The trailers, as we know, the trailers are modular units, would be removed from the site, and Churchill would now operate as a 7, 8 building. So we would have K-4 in our elementary schools, 5, 6 upper elementary at Hammerhill, a true middle school at Churchill with 7, 8, and now a comprehensive 9 through 12 high school. What that does is that puts us in sync with all of our peer groups in Middlesex County. That helps in looking at student performance because our 9th graders now become part of the high school. It solves athletic problems. It also gives us the opportunity to have all of our students, all of our high school students, on one campus, which I think is really important. And over the years, as superintendent, I've talked to students. So we talk to stakeholders. I've talked to students. And the one thing they wish they would have experienced here at East Brunswick would have been a comprehensive high school. So I think this is the opportunity for this board to consider that. And just as a timeline, this is just to frame up that this is not a quick process. The project planning phase, which by board action would begin, would take up to 21 months. That potentially could be shorter, but we don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. So this would be a variety of meetings, of course, stakeholder groups, a lot of work with the architects, investigating current models, talking with township stakeholders, you know, so that this would be a very comprehensive and evolved phase. Then we have the review from the New Jersey Department of Education. We anticipate that will take six months. Then in March 2024, and we have some multiple dates for referendum, but we believe that we would be in a position to advertise, promote, and discuss a bond referendum for vote in March of 2024. And I'm going with the assumption that we can be successful the first time. I think with the right amount of work, the right focus, I think this community would be in a position to consider a referendum to construct a new high school on the existing site. And so that, after that, would be construction drawings and the bids. We're moving up to June of 2025. And then in a conservative timeframe, about 36 months to rebuild or build a new high school, demolish the existing high school. And then the second phase of that would be to reclaim that space and really enhance our athletic facilities with state-of-the-art facilities for athletes, address our issues with our arts, and of course, have high impact on our academics as well in the school. So thank you very much for the opportunity to do this public presentation tonight. I'll be happy to entertain questions. And on the agenda tonight is a resolution that the board may consider for moving the planning phase forward.
So thank you, Dr. Valesky. Before I open it up for questions, just to sum up, you've asked the board, after considering the options of renovating the existing high school and coming up with a plan to eliminate the TCU's in the five-year period that the state allows us to have them, as opposed to building a new 9 to 12 structure. And you are asking us to approve exploring the process of a new 9 to 12 structure.
Yes, exactly. President Becker, the approval would be for the process of comprehensive planning. And that would involve design concepts, other features that might be included in the site to address the arts and athletics, and of course, costing to determine what the total cost of the project potentially could be, what the impact to taxpayers could be, and what the offset could be to taxpayers if we're able to construct a facility that had a revenue-generating stream that we don't currently enjoy. So by building new, we have the opportunity to explore potentially, you know, the use and rental of larger facilities like our JMPAC, but on a larger scale that could provide additional revenue streams back to the district and offset the cost to taxpayers.
So this is not a resolution to approve a specific referendum?
Correct.
It is a resolution to give the administration approval to go ahead with exploring the plans for this option?
Correct.
Questions, comments? You also will have a chance to, questions and comments, when we get to the actual resolution? Anything anybody wants to bring up now? Seeing none, thank you very much for that presentation.
You're certainly welcome.
Greatly appreciate it.
Certainly. And I just want to put out to the community that, you know, if community members who have watched us have any questions, feel free to call my office. We'll be happy to answer them. And I'm going to stand right here, President Becker, because I believe your next presentation is me also.
Our next presentation does involve you, Dr. Valesky.
Thank you, President Becker.
Our next, it's not a presentation, actually. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on the Student Safety Data System Report. After Dr. Valesky delivers the report, I will ask if there's anyone from the public wishing to speak on this issue and this issue only. This does not take the place of the good or the cause of the public. This is just a public hearing on a specific agenda item. Dr. Valesky?
Thank you. This is a public hearing of the East Brunswick Public Schools Safety Data System Report. On an annual basis, school districts are required to report at public hearing the number of acts of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse that occurred in the previous school year. This report also meets the federal requirement for identifying persistently dangerous schools. We report incidents of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse to the board on a monthly basis. At this meeting, I would like to review a summary of the incidents that occurred during the 2020-2021 school year. It is important to note that during the 2020-21 school year, many of our students remain virtual or participated in hybrid learning. And for that reason, our numbers in each category are lower than the previous years. In the category of violence, there were three incidents of violence. That includes fights, threats, and assaults in the 2020-21 school year. And as you recall, we did vacate our premises on March 20, 2020. We had three incidents of vandalism in that year. In substance abuse, there were two reported incidents of substance abuse for the 2021-21 school year. And harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We had a total of 22 total HIV investigations, but of those, 22, eight were confirmed, and the rest were not. Virtual and in-person activities were available in all of our schools during Violence Awareness Week to prevent school violence and highlight the importance of school safety. In addition, our administrative and staff review policies and regulations, safety crisis procedures, and important topics promoting student safety on a regular basis. And some examples of the activities are sources of strength, peer and adult mentoring program activities, our Gay-Straight Alliance, Safe Space, Positive Messages, School Spirit Days throughout the district, Make-A-Wish Letters, Mentor Program, cultural organizations, peace pledges, cyberbullying programs, our SSO EBPD video safety clips, Peacemaker of the Week, Ovea's Anti-Bullying Program with a focus on class meetings, Violence Prevention Week activities, Respect Week activities. And all this is the work and training provided by Dr. Figueroa, and he's Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Student Activities, Paul Nettalicio, Director of School Security Operations, our security team, Daniel Blaylock, Supervisor of Student Services, our Student Assistance Specialist, Luis Sultana, Supervisor of Counseling and Career Readiness, our school counselors, nurses, teachers, support staff, and administrators. And I do want to give a huge shout-out to our nurses that they provide this training. In addition to that, they are, I use this word lightly, they are consumed with contact tracing. And they don't stop until that work is done that day. And it doesn't matter what time of night they finish. So my hat's off to them. We continue to make significant strides, excuse me, in training and understanding the needs of our students and their families in an ever-changing environment. And we've talked about that at this board meeting. We have more work to do, but we appreciate with great sincerity the support of the Board of Education. As I asserted as late as my community message this afternoon, East Brunswick's schools are safe, but work to improve our school climate throughout the district remains continuous. Priorities include social and emotional health and substance abuse, which remain concerns at the state, national, and of course, here at the local level. We have well-trained and dedicated staff, wonderful students, and supportive parents. And our search for proactive approaches that enhance the safety of our nearly 12,000 students and staff in our 11 schools, as well as our support operations facility and here in our administrative complex, will never diminish. So for the board, you have a summary of the, all of the categories that are referenced, as well as our to-date totals on the right-hand side. I do want to caution the board that to-date totals on the 2021-22 school year only include the months of September and October right now because we're still collecting information back from buildings. But I do, as part of this public hearing, I want to address the situation at Churchill because I know that was an issue and a concern for a lot of parents about the fights and all vacation at Churchill. I give huge credit to Matt Hannis, new principal at Churchill, his administrative staff, the teachers, and especially the SSOs at that building. Those issues were dealt with on a case-by-case basis. Appropriate discipline was administered. Our staff was right on it all the time and putting themselves, in some cases, in harm's way. Some of our staff actually, you know, were physically assaulted in some of those conditions. The use of social media, the use of cell phones to share video is something that we take very seriously. And we, as a district, are going to start looking and reinforcing our district policies and procedures about the inappropriate utilization of private cell phones to capture data during the school day, which is obviously a violation of acceptable use policies. But also, that information shared on social media platforms, which creates grave concern for our security of our schools, but also puts parents and guardians in positions of not knowing truly what's happening because those videos can be edited very quickly. So we are aware of that. We are taking, that is a focus for this next school year. But I did want to mention that because as part of violence and vandalism and security, I thought it was appropriate. And Matt Hannis did an excellent job of bringing the students together, having one-on-one meetings with groups of students with his staff to explain the importance of respect. And I think that's the underlying tone that we want to express here in East Brunswick, is respect for each other, respect for difference of opinion, and respect for everyone's safety. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. As this is a public hearing, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this topic of the Student Safety Data System Report and this topic only? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Thank you. Entertain any questions or discussions from the board?
I have a question.
Lori?
So, and I know this is tough because you're filling in for Lou, but I guess my concern is if these numbers for 2021-2022 only represent two of the 10 school months?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So is it possible to get the totals from the year before? Because I know we're looking at a lesson. I'm just curious because if it's, I was looking at how they've gone up.
I can actually, I can actually produce that for you. For the year before, this is before the pandemic. If you look down the list, I'm going to go right down with HIV investigation, starting that. HIV Investigations was 86. This was the 2019-2020 school year. Twenty-eight HIBs were confirmed. There were eight assaults. There were three false public alarms. There were six threats, seven fights, six thefts, 14 investigated substance abuse, three student arrests, one involving weapons, and one for trespassing. There were no damages to property during that time period. And the vandalism that I reported tonight were damage to property at Memorial Elementary School, the gazebo. We had etching on the property at Memorial Elementary School. And the baseball field fencing at the high school was damaged. Our substance abuse continued to be the misuse of vape and vape oil and marijuana, or THC oil, I'm sorry, with vape, vaping oil.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. They're more in line than, I just got nervous. There was going to be a huge, okay. Thank you.
One second. I'm sorry, Heather. I had Jeff first, then I'll take you. Jeff?
I think, I think I heard in the question you were asked, Ms. Lacks, to do a basis of comparison, you mentioned this is two months of data. Can we get two months of data from last year pre, what'd you say, March 20th, we went out?
Yes.
Can we get an apples-to-apples comparison on the same timeframe, just out of curiosity?
You don't have to do anything.
Yes. Yes, I have the breakdown actually by month, and I'd be happy to share this with the board. And if I could, I'd do a supplemental.
No, if you don't mind. I just want to see where we are. It's a gauge of stress within the school system. I think it's more of a stress test than it is anything else, and I'd like to hear what that slide grade.
It was actually September 2020 until March of 20, I'm sorry. No, that would be, we were looking at September till, let me get that information.
September, October, so it'd be September, October from the comparable year.
Yeah.
But last year, remember, Jeff was still in the pandemic. I was, my curiosity, I'm sorry, Heather, I know you.
Well, we were in school though, September, October last.
No, 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 remember it was March.
Then the year before, then September, yeah, okay. Was that your question?
Yeah, I was trying to compare to the pre-pandemic.
For two months. I just want a comparable two-month window.
We can take a two-month snapshot for multiple years and give you that comparison.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather?
I was just going to say, even the numbers for 2019-2020 are missing, what, three, four months.
Right.
Remote at the end of the year. So even those don't be impacted by that.
We'll take a two-month snapshot on multiple years and see what kind of trending there is.
Yep.
And so we can see, you know, where we sit right there.
Good point. Point. Yes.
Do you have a breakdown of what school's grades were the incidents in?
I don't have that level of detail, Mark. We do have that level to get down to that.
We can get that too. We can get that for the board.
That would make sense, you know, more, you know.
Sure, absolutely. I think these requests Victor can put together in like a supplement.
We can pull it.
And send it to us.
I'm saying you give it to us. He should have. We get, Mark, we get monthly reports. If you look, we're always getting the monthly reports. So that information is broken down by school. This is a good snapshot. But if you wanted the school information, you actually get that each month, which is good. It's helpful.
Anyone else? Any comments, questions, discussions? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again, Dr. Valesky.
You're welcome.
For the good or the cause of the public, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Just as a reminder to any members of the public, the Board of Ed is committed to this being a time for the public to come and address the board without entering into a dialogue with the board or having the board question them. This is the public's time to come and speak. So please don't mistake our silence for anything other than us paying attention. Any questions, specific questions that are asked, can be, your contact information can be given to that lovely lady Janet waving her hand, white blouse, second row. Give your contact information to her on your way in, and we'll make absolutely sure that any questions get answered. Participants are limited to three minutes duration. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board?
Good evening. Dana Zimbicki, President of the East Brunswick Education Association. So I'm coming to you tonight for two reasons. One, to make a request, and one to share some information. I have always valued the partnership that we've developed between the association, the board, and central administration. And I think when we collaborate and we work together and we're responsive to each other, great things do occur. I have a concern because the associations had some pressing issues recently that we consider pressing. And since mid-November, I have not had the dignity of a response. And they deal with the demand of bargain, with snow plowing, the Cronos situation. So I'm just asking for a response because we just need to move forward so that we can develop plans and we can put things behind us. So that's something that I would like to request. I do want to thank many central administrators who have been extremely collaborative with the association. I think we have been a great bridge to helping solve some of the stresses that are going on currently, just with life, the way we face it right now. And that's what I want to talk about next. The stress level our staff in the district is absolutely through the roof. I know some matters are completely out of your control, but others, you do have the power to ease that stress. I had a meeting yesterday with about 50 EBA leadership members, and I had staff crying during this meeting. I've had a significant number of staff that have reached out to me because of the undue stress that they're facing to get counseling. And right now, the wait for a new patient for counseling is a month. We have a crisis on our hands, a labor crisis, a mental health crisis nationally and right here in East Brunswick. Your people, everyone from child nutrition, bus drivers, secretaries, IT, bookkeepers, instructional assistants, school aides, custodians, tradesmen, and teachers, keep us in the business of doing what we do, teaching and helping the kids. But we need to take a step back and look at what we can do to consider the staff's mental health. Instead of adding to the pile, we need to decide what can be removed. This is one very simple example, but in three minutes, I don't have a lot of time. In the past, the ILA teachers had to enter one score for each on-demand writing. Now they have to enter 11 separate data pieces for each on-demand writing, and that's all due when grades are due at the end of each marking period. It's an enormous amount of work that's adding three hours on to just entering data. And I'm not sure, based on the responses I'm getting, if that data is really necessary right now because they're still doing the grading and they're still entering data points in the past. But now we're entering even more. So why this change this year in a year where staff are already challenged? An article recently published by the NEA resonated with me. There was a quote that stuck out, and the quote says, "I think these are well-intentioned, but it's more, but it's more than one-day trainings, free chair massages, breathing exercises, and casual Fridays." I would like to continue if possible. Can I continue?
I think if there's nobody else, I think you can allow the President of the NEA to.
Thank you. I really do appreciate that because I think it's really important to hear this. Those are all good, but it's not what educators need right now to reduce burnout and improve morale or their long-term well-being. I wish you would consider asking educators, what's the most time-consuming part of your job? What tasks aren't as important? And what are the systems that we can put in place so educators can do the work that matters most, teaching those kids in the classroom? We're spending tonight, right, one of the things on the agenda, almost $1 million from the American Rescue Plan on Mental Health. Great. I'm happy about that. But please don't forget your staff. And in fact, it wouldn't even cost a penny. Just some pure common sense and some compassion, and it would speak volumes right now. All these changes that are going on, including the pandemic, and the fact that the staff is emotionally exhausted dealing with just the situations in the schools as some of the things you talked about today. I believe East Brunswick could possibly be on the precipice of being one of those school districts that we're reading in the newspaper that will be forced to close because of staffing issues, because people just need to take time, because they can't deal with what is going on. I have an enormous amount of people that have come to me for retirement, come to me to ask how they can take time off because they just need that break. And, you know, some people that have decided this is the time to start their family or expand their family because they need time away. So I'm just asking, please consider that. I do think we are in a crisis, and I would appreciate anything you can do to try to ease that. And I do appreciate your time, and I thank you very much for the extension. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Dr. Zimbicki. A very happy holiday to you, your family, and the entire staff. Thank you for coming and expressing your concerns so articulately. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I close the public portion. Moving on to tonight's agenda. Under the Board of Education items, can I please have a motion? Before I ask for a motion to combine items one through five, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one through five?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Cor Angelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mr. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
You say Mr.?
Yes.
I'm sorry. What did I do?
I have no idea. I can't hear.
Mr. Lacks.
I'm sorry. My apologies.
Mr. Osmond.
I hear he's a nice guy. I was hoping to meet. Mr. Winston.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker. President Becker.
Whatever. Yes. Motion carried.
You're doing great, Joe.
You're awesome, Joe.
I can't hear anyway, so whatever you're saying, that's fine.
That's why I like you so much.
I know. And my left ear too. Okay. Under our community programs agenda, we have one item tonight, a contract award for Black Rocket.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lori, second by Barbara. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absane? Notion carries. Under our curriculum items, curriculum instruction agenda, we have one item tonight, a new program for the 2022-2023 school year. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion?
I just want to know what that is, piggy, phonological awareness.
Dr. Bowley.
It's a literacy program we're using in K-1 to build students' phonemic and phonological awareness so they can hear and isolate and manipulate sounds in words to strengthen their foundational literacy scope.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Cor Angelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes. Motion carried. Under our facilities agenda, I'd like to read the following resolution and then ask for a motion. It is for authorization to commence project planning for a new comprehensive high school to encompass grades nine through 12. The recommendation from the superintendent. Whereas the Board of Education assigned the superintendent of schools goals pertaining to school facility improvements. And whereas the Board of Education has reviewed and discussed various options for facility improvements throughout the district. And whereas among the options considered were expansions to existing elementary school buildings, which would require the installation of temporary classroom units, otherwise known as TCUs, at multiple elementary school sites, most of which do not have sufficient site capacity to support classroom expansions. And whereas the addition of TCUs with resultant increased enrollments would also require expansions to elementary school core facilities such as cafeterias, gymnasiums, and support service areas, as well as utility infrastructure and parking. And whereas the Board of Education approved a grade restructuring plan and the installation of TCUs at Churchill Junior High School to consolidate work at one location and limit the resultant expenditure that would be required. And whereas the New Jersey Department of Education requires that the board have a plan for the phase-out and removal of the TCUs in three to five years. And whereas the removal of the TCUs will require either the construction of a major addition to Churchill Junior High School or the relocation of one grade level from the facility. And whereas East Brunswick High School facility requires tens of millions of dollars in improvements and renovations, yet such a commitment would still not result in providing the very teaching and learning environment required for the 21st century. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is in the best interest of the school district to plan for the future removal of the TCUs to coincide with the realignment of Churchill to house grades seven and eight, along with the relocation of grade nine to the high school. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, by the Board of Education, that the superintendent of schools and the administration are authorized to commence project planning for a new comprehensive high school to encompass grades nine through 12, and be it further resolved that the administration is authorized to work with Parat Samjin Architects, LLC, Rockaway, New Jersey, and other appropriate professionals required for project planning.
So moved.
Moved by Lori.
Second.
Second by Barbara. Is there any discussion? Barbara?
I just want to thank Dr. Valesky and the administration for putting together a plan to move us forward in the 21st century. Our high school, our students, and our teachers work very hard, and they've done amazing things in the building. And I can't speak from having gone to school here, but I know that it has a long story tradition, the high school. But it seems that if in order for us to have the kind of community educational system that our residents take pride in, we have to take the next step to provide those facilities for our students and for our futures. Many of, most of the folks on this board, their kids will not see this high school. But it's for the future. And we want to make sure that East Brunswick still is the shining star, its educational system is the shining star as it is today. And thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Jeff?
Dr. Valesky, I appreciate the presentation. It was excellent. I agree with what Ms. Reese said. Having been a lifelong resident here, quite frankly, I find it very exciting to know that the next generation of students here will be able to experience something like this as it comes to fruition. So that aside, and the board's requirement to be good stewards of the township's, of the taxpayers' dollar, and here, I do see that already you've identified professionals, am I pronouncing correctly, Samjin Architects?
Correct.
So my question is, in this Phase One of exploratory, has there been any cost analysis at this point, what Phase One would cost? And as this unfolds, but at least in this first section that's been approved by this board, do you have anything surrounding costs? How will it be monitored? Who's the oversight? And how will the information be delivered to the board?
Mr. Winston, we have not done any costing models. We have done a broad scope of what high schools currently under construction, what they are costing. Obviously, you are all aware, that is in not only today's dollars, but maybe already costed out in dollars from pre-pandemic, if they had pre-purchased. So no, we have not done anything in terms of specific costs. But we will, as this planning phase begins, once the model, the educational specifications are developed in determining what is high- in determining what this high school would contain and what sizes of those components would be in there, the next phase, right, would be a costing model, uh, by, by an appropriate costing professional.
Let me just pause. And I totally understand down the road. I'm talking specifically about what we approved this evening.
Right.
Uh, you'll be consulting with architects. I imagine their time isn't free.
Correct.
Along with other aspects that will take place in this first phase.
Yes.
I'm not talking about bricks and, and, uh, and buildings.
The, um, like the, um, professional cost.
Specifically to this exploratory phase, the cost around the exploratory phase, how will that information be delivered to the board? What oversight would the board be able to provide? As Chair of the Finance, I have an interest in that.
Sure.
And, uh, how will it be monitored? How will it be maintained? And, uh, what would be the communication?
We can make that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, please.
We can make that as a part of routine, uh, reporting to the board, uh, either through my members to the board or as a public forum, or both, uh, to share with the board our expenditure, the board's expenditures, the public's expenditures along this process, uh, and when we engage professionals, what their scope of work is and what, what that costs.
And the expectations involved.
Correct.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I see somebody's hand up over here. Okay, and, uh, I just wanted to say, um, appreciate all the work the administration has done so far to go into planning that resulted in this presentation. And that at some point during the process, we're not there yet, um, but at some point during the process, when we have more concrete things to discuss, the Board of Education, I'm sure, will take the proper measures to involve all stakeholders in the community, um, whether it's residents, township officials, staff, students, parents, um, and, uh, really a cross-section of all stakeholders to get feedback and to keep everyone informed. And I'm sure that that will be rolled out at the appropriate time. Okay, if there are no other questions, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Before I ask for a motion to combine items one through 16 on the financial services agenda tonight, is there anything anyone wants separated out?
President Becker, one, please.
I'm so sorry.
One, please.
You would like item one separated out?
Yeah, or can I just make a comment after we're all are together? Is that okay?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, yeah. If you have a question in a second, you can comment on it.
That is fine. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? And can I please have a motion for items one through 16?
So moved.
There is you can comment.
He got Lori and he got Jeff.
Sure, Lori and Jeff. Okay, thank you. Um, is there any discussion? Mark, then Heather?
Do you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
Number one, um, just as a, I guess, a matter of, can, can a, does the superintendent or a principal waive this, although a nominal fee? I think the need would arise possibly if, if the family was in financial hardship. Um, does this give us the ability to, at some level, waive the fee?
And typically, Mr. Crossfield, you want to, you want to answer? Typically, we don't waive the fee. Uh, go ahead. You can elaborate.
So, uh, yes, typically, we do not waive the fee, but if there is a hardship, we do have an internal process, um, that involves finance and also Dr. Figaro's office to determine what the hardship is. We've also had circumstances where certain staff member have taken care of various fees out of their own pocket to ensure that students that are in a situation are not penalized. So the district does do everything possible to ensure, you know, a kid isn't going to miss a field trip, miss graduation because of a, an eight-dollar fee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Heather?
Um, I wanted to know, it says these fees are in terms of replacement. Is this also, I know the case was also though, if a student comes to school without their ID, are they forced to pay the replacement fee for the day?
I'm not aware of that, unless, unless some board member is. I'm not aware of that being initiated. They are.
Because that's my concern is, I, it's worded as a replacement fee, but it really is almost a penalty charge. If they come to school and they have forgotten their ID, they have to pay this fee to get an ID for that day, even if their ID is at home to bring the next day.
Okay.
So Heather, what happens? They're turned away? Tell me, tell me about that. So they have to pay the fee to what? To get in?
No, they reproduce the ID, I believe.
They reproduce the ID and charge them for it.
Yeah, so if you have, like, if you get a second ID at any point, you have the option of bringing them both the next day and leaving one in the office. So if you have an extra one in the office, you don't need to pay the fee the next time. But it is, um, you have to walk around to the front of the building and enter through the main office and get an ID if you don't have one on you.
So it's reproduction fee for the second, for the second ID? Okay.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Sure. Absolutely, on anything you'd like.
Thank you. On, on number 15, the Esther Fund. Um, it doesn't have to be today, the attorney's not here, but maybe, or Joe, is that maybe just overview for us? Like, I know there's Esther One, there's Esther Two, there's a lot of them. ARP, you know?
Actually, Joe and his team, the finance team, would be the most appropriate people to do a presentation.
Okay.
But if you, if you could, we, we could do a, a, an actual presentation for the board.
Cause I'm trying to follow this and it's a lot.
So are you looking just for all the translations or the detail of it? It, it's very confusing, like, could they have any more acronyms?
Just like to know where we, where we are in the funds, what we're using them for. Like, what's the timeframe for each one? Are they, do they overlap? Are they instead of one another? You know, I, I don't, you know, that's, I'm thankful for the money, don't get me wrong, but it's good to know what it's being used for.
I, I think it would require Joe and his team to, to really put this, and, and even for me, it's the layman's terms map it out.
Correct.
This is what we do.
Yeah.
Because there are so many absolute details to this that if you get it wrong, you're in jeopardy of the money. But Joe and his team are excellent and do a great job, phenomenal job. So I think a higher level, would you be okay with like that higher level, just, just the categories that we're going for?
I think, well, and also like a lot of people from the community will ask me and say, well, we got all these monies from the federal government, what are we using them for, right? So here we have some of them listed, but, you know, not all of it. And so it kind of comes in drips and drabs.
Joe, I don't want to, um, overpromise. What, what would it take for you and your team to put together a presentation? What kind of timeframe? Could we do it in January?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We have a cheat sheet ourselves.
Thank you.
So it's just a matter of, uh, taking out of accounting terms and putting it into, you know, terms everybody can understand and appreciate. Um, and, yeah, we, we can do that. That's not an issue.
Thank you.
I, I just want to clarify that the gentleman who has won so many financial awards for the district just referred to a cheat sheet. And, uh, so that was just a misstatement on his part. He meant an instructional aid.
And there's no such thing as a plug number either.
Yeah, that's right.
Barbara, excellent question. Thank you for asking. I'm sure all of us have had the same thought. So, Joe, we look forward to the, um, question on cheating.
An overview.
Um, I believe we're up to, um, roll call unless anybody else has any other question or comments? Okay. The secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Actually, I was struggling for the word and then I remembered it. It would be a cliff note section on the, uh, on the funding.
What if you couldn't afford the cliff note?
I'll pull it off the internet.
We'll start a GoFundMe page.
Did they have the internet when you were in school?
Anyway, moving right along to human resources, since we're going to get off the topic of age of people who have been up on the dais. Under our human resources agenda tonight, before I ask for a motion to combine items one and two, two being in the dendum we were all given notice about, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion to combine items one and two?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. We have one item on our staff development, uh, agenda tonight, a contract for Savas, Savas Learning Company. Uh, can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Lori. Second by Barbara. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Heather?
Um, this says that it's for potential use in following years and, but this is separate from, um,
It's the InVision intervention.
Okay, I was going to ask if this was the same or if this was a separate, because there was such a focus on the comprehensive program.
It's the intervention and the diagnostic and intervention piece of InVision. It stands alone. So we just want to try it out. Even if the board doesn't move forward with the other, we would still be able to, we're still looking for that piece anyway.
Thank you. That's exactly what the question is.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Before I ask for a motion to combine items one and two on tonight's student services agenda, is there anything anyone wants separated out? Seeing none, can I please have a motion for items one and two?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Mark Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. This brings us up to new and old business committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. Anyone have anything? Okay.
I, I just, I have not, I don't want to interrupt this committee meeting reports.
Sure, go for it.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to, two thank yous. One is for the vaccine clinics. Uh, it was amazing that we had, you know, to, to our administration, Dr. Valeski and, and the EBA, and all the different clinics that we had. Um, people can't get a booster shot. It's hard to get one. It's like a really amazing thing if you can kind of find one in the area. So it's a source of pride for us that we have access to that at several occasions right here in the district and it's made it accessible. So thank you to everyone who's done that and spent hours here after work, you know, manning these things and crowd control and all. So thank, thank you so much.
Some of the ladies out here, the DEA, Janet Angela and Karen Mandler, um, they have been critical in getting these clinics up and running, uh, and getting people to them. Uh, so they deserve all the recognition.
Thank you so much, really. We appreciate, we all appreciate. And, and, and just as a thank you to, I'm sure all, all of us, and I, as a parent, thank you so much to all our teachers and to our staff. We are very thankful for everything you do. And we know we wouldn't be here without you. So we thank you and, uh, our kids thank you. You know, uh, I mean, I'm sure all of us, uh, in the district realize we are all, and to our administration, the hours that they spend after hours, I don't even know how many hours they spend, so many hours here. And we all, I, I know my family and I'm sure everyone here is very appreciative for everything that you do. And, um, you know, sometimes it's the business of the board. It may not seem that we, we do care and we all do care and it means a lot, right, to all of us.
Barbara, that was put so beautifully. Um, I was going to say something myself. I could literally say ditto. We are aware, very much so, of, um, the stress and pain and incredible effort and commitment it takes our staff, uh, support staff, administrators, and students to get through every day. I think it is just amazing. I can't comprehend what it takes to do it, but whatever it is, as Barbara said, we are so grateful and appreciative. And we heard everything you said, Dr. Zimbicki. And I just wanted to wish, um, not just I, but speaking for myself and probably most of the board, everyone in the entire universe, uh, at least those, um, residents, students, staff, administrators, a very happy holiday, whatever holiday you celebrate, and a new year that brings us health and health and safety and health and safety. And, um, that is my wish for everyone. Anyone else? Mark?
It's hard to say things up here sometimes because you're not allowed to, what you're allowed to say and what you're not allowed to say because there's contact negotiations and all that type of stuff. But yes, I can speak for myself. I heard you. And, uh, you know, whatever's possible, I don't know at this point, but actions do speak louder than words. So that's all I have to say on that. That's, I think I'm safe in saying that for right now, so, but we, we hear the staff. We can put this back.
Heather, then LeWu?
Well, I had two things somewhat sort of related. Um, I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at the minutes from the Student Services Committee. Student Services Committee met in November. Um, the minutes are huge. The meeting was long and just a wealth of resources that we offer. But I think what the minutes overlooked was the amount of discussion about what we're offering to the students in terms of support and mental health at different levels. And the, the amount, I had no idea, the amount of outreach there is this year. I was so overwhelmed by what it is that we're offering to the students. So that may not come through in the actual minutes, but, um, there was, there were presentations. I would like that shared with the rest of the board as well, the presentation that was given there so that people could see what it is that we're offering. It's a great deal and that's fantastic. Following up with that, I am very glad that you were here tonight. Um, I certainly understand the stress and, and very difficult because I feel like this year, I, I've talked to Dr. Valeski about it. It's not something that you can really put your finger on. Like, it's not one thing. It is just overwhelmingly stressful, um, for administrators and teachers. And I do, I don't know if the students are feeling the stress as much as the adults in the same way, but there is something very, very different and stressful this year. And I appreciate concrete ideas and the dialogue that the staff is still trying to have with administrators and with the board. So thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, Heather. Mark, LeWu?
Yes, uh, I just want to echo Mrs. Reese's comment. During the, uh, the COVID vaccine sections, I, I was there with my children. I, you know, if you were there, you would know how many people are there. So I'm really impressed by, by Janet and Karen. Looks like they know everything. Their parents, their children, when they got anything, they'd go to those two ladies. Yeah, they're very critical. I told Victor that you, you are so lucky to have those two all-round capable ladies there. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Heather?
I don't, I don't remember when we addressed this, but I had seen that the Teachers of the Year for different buildings and the Support Professional for the Year were announced recently. Yes. I've seen several of the schools and I just wanted to congratulate the people that were recognized by their peers. It was a nice, positive light in what is a very, very difficult year. And it was nice to drive past the high school and see on the sign for the high school as well.
Could Dani speak to that? Because I think it's really important about the recognition that
Absolutely.
we've had to postpone and it's been, you know, kind of on hiatus, so.
Thank you so much. Our intention was to give the board a list this evening, but we had one person who has been absent from work. Um, and we had to find a creative way to announce that they won. So we actually asked her to get onto a Zoom call. We put up an affirmative action PowerPoint and said, you know, you've been out, so you're on, on the training. Sorry, Dana. And we went through two slides and the third slide said, "We interrupt this presentation to let you know." Um, and she was, you know, of course, very surprised. And we told her that when she comes back, we will celebrate her in proper fashion. So we, that was this morning. So we look forward to getting the information out to the board. Uh, we could do by email later, tonight or tomorrow for you, so you know who everyone is. And then the schools were so wonderful in sharing their for you, so you know who everyone is. And then the schools were so wonderful in sharing their wonderful moments of announcing the teacher, meaning all certificate staff, and the support staff awards. So we will be sharing the pictures with the district also, and then we'll do our joint presentation, the board, the association, EBPSA, as soon as we can get into the PAC. So thank you so much, and we are so proud of our winners, and you will be too when you hear about all their wonderful contributions.
So we are opening our PAC, the JM PAC for rental, after the holiday break, pending some unusual situation that prevents us or slows us down. So we look forward to all the activities that we normally associate with the rest of the year, including staff recognition that occurs before we, which doesn't seem so far away as the high school graduation.
Come on, it's only December.
But as I offered, every senior who sits on this board, if you wish to stay another year, I can make it happen.
I do graduate on my birthday, so I am looking forward to it.
That's the best birthday present ever.
That's very nice.
With facilities rentals, anybody watching this, if you're interested in a job, go to our website under HR. They're currently open. We are actively looking for staff. It would be greatly appreciated.
And East Brunswick's a great place to work. Oh, yes.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we do have a need for closed session, correct?
We do.
Okay.
For just a quick update.
Okay. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. Those items listed in tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, afterwards, a public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Can I please have a motion to go into closed?
So moved.
Moved by Lori, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We are on closed session. Good night. Thank you for joining us.